Boys, good evening. It is five thirty P M on Wednesday, July fifth, two thousand twenty-three. In this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall eleven twenty-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding, also President and Counselors Kate McAllister, excuse me, Deborah, Andy Groth, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick, Councilor Joel Espirito is absent. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. On the consent calendar, this is this evening is a request for confirmation of appointments to the Urban renewal board, including the reappointment of Eric Paul, who's been on the board for the past eighteen years and serves as the Board Chair. This is a volunteer role, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank and recognize Eric for his many years of service. I'd also like to thank Counselor Walker for his willingness to take on a new role as a new member of the board.
Thank you.
Are there any announcements from City Council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd really like to thank our police department, our fire department, our crows, Bonner County EMS sheriffs for a successful Fourth of July weekend. They all did a really good job with keeping us safe. I think that having the holiday on a Tuesday can hopefully the public had a great time and ran out a little bit of steam on Tuesday. Also, along with that, I'd really like to bring attention how important our crows are, specifically J D. He helped me work with two different neighborhoods to bring the radar speed trailer into another neighborhood that is dealing with speeding as well as cut through traffic that a lot of our neighborhoods are dealing with. Also like to thank Paula at the within the Lake Street neighborhood. She was willing to forego her request of that trailer for placement on Lake Street for us to provide an opportunity for another neighborhood that's adjacent to that to be able to have the positive impact of our drivers' actual speed being reported and shown and talking to some of the neighbors. It's made a big difference. I'd like to think that people are just there. They're busy with driving as well as they are negligent in cutting through a visual representation of their actual speed as deterrent has made a positive impact. So I want to thank our crows, J D, Paula, the adjacent neighborhoods that are all working together. We're doing our very best to resolve and and just have some calming measures in these neighborhoods. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo Andy's statements as well, too. I was walking around on the beach yesterday. I spoke to a couple of the crows. The crowd down there was amazing. Big kudos to the Lions Club for coming out and selling and putting on the fireworks show as they do every year. And lastly, a big kudos to you, Mr. Mayor, for the last time we met addressing the comments of the public on that particular video. Thought you did an amazing job and the community members that had brought it to my attention. I made him go back and watch the first part of the last session that we had and all of them responded wonderfully about it. So thank you.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I have an exciting update for my fellow council members. You may recall back in January, this this body, I stepped down and the body voted to support a grant application that Pondered Peddler submitted on behalf of the city for a skills park at Traverse Park. Since that time, we have raised fifty-four thousand dollars through two grants, private donations, local business support, including thirty-eight hundred dollars from Seringa Cyclery and the Panda, two events, the Panda, which together raised six thousand dollars. And just a donation portal on our website. So small donations from members, we reached fifty-four thousand dollars, which was more than we needed to order the nine skills features from American Ramp Company, which are being ordered this week, actually. We also have to thank Gino Construction, which is the city's partner on the Traverse Park racket sports complex. They're also donating quite a bit of excavation work and labor towards this project and local trail builder Mike McCoy with Collaborative Trails, who has also committed over eight thousand dollars of donated labor towards this project. So we are hoping by October to be actually building the skills park. Today I went just before calling American Ramp Company to order the features. I went one last time with our plans in hand to the site of the skills park, and there were five little boys on what I would describe as kind of clunker bikes, just riding around on that dirt track. And I called them all over. I recognized one of them. He had gotten a scholarship for a pop program before, and I showed them the plans and described all these features, and their eyes were just huge, and they could not believe that they're going to have berms to ride and tabletops and things like that that they could experience in this park for free. And they wanted to know when when will they be able to ride it? And they said probably before Halloween. And they just couldn't believe that they're going to have a new bike park in town by this fall. So I want to thank city staff Maeve for being an awesome partner on this. Gino Construction is they came to our fundraiser at the Panda, the owner, Rich, and he immediately said he wanted to support this project as well. So we've had a lot of community support, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with that. So thank you, guys.
That's great. Thanks. All right. Any others from council? Okay, staff updates.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of updates on upcoming special events. We have a break from special events this weekend, believe it or not. That's an unusual break for us in the summer. But permitted events, the one that started just this week are the free meals at City Beach. So we partnered with Lake Ponte Rei School District on that event, and they're putting together the free meals that's for youth ages one to eighteen throughout the summer months. That's Monday through Friday through August eighteenth, and that's down at our cupboard area at City Beach. So those are distributed over the noon hour during the week. Upcoming event permit pending with final review is for July fourteenth and fifteenth. That's the Sandpoint Pride event that is over at the Granary District. Reminder that we're typically not permitting events that are on private property, but in this case, because there is some crossover into the adjacent public right of way, that's why we're permitting this event, which typically we aren't involved with permitting other events at the Granary District. And then also the
Can I ask about that? Is that crossing over into the I T D lot? Where is the public impacted?
On Oak Street.
Okay.
And then we have a secondary secondary looking at the chief. We've got secondary coverage into another street along there, too. Oakland and Sixth going into, I think the event crosses over. They're doing some of the staging over at Hartwood Center. So that's why Sixth Street is new this year from what we've done in the past, but there were right of way impacts last year along Oak Street as well. So it'll be those same impacts this year. Also, that weekend is the Antique and Classic Boat Show, not so long our city boardwalk. So we're in the process of finalizing that permit will probably be released this week. And then also just wanted to note, because we've had some questions raised from the public. We've had signs posted up this year noting that we have no lifeguards at duty at City Beach. We've been challenged with lifeguard recruitment throughout the summer for actually the last few years. And this year has been especially a challenge for us with recruitment, just like it has been for employers throughout the the community. There's a certain number of lifeguards that we need throughout the summer months in order to effectively be able to maintain a program through the months. And there's there's challenges when we're having lifeguards, then we're posting no lifeguard on duty throughout the summer. And we've worked through a number of different options, including limiting ourselves to one bench, limiting number of days a week. But at the end of the day, staffing challenges have just been such a challenge. Through the last month, there was quite a bit of effort with additional outreach, working with the media. This is our last week of recruiting. We had gone through training with those who were interested in being a lifeguard, but our numbers have been so small this summer. And then availability of those individuals has been limited as well with accommodating family vacations and things that we're not likely not going to be able to staff lifeguards throughout the summer. So again, for the public and expectations, our staff did as good of a job as they could with recruitment, but it's the staffing challenges that we run into this year.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a follow up question?
Yeah.
When you say we're not likely to be able to staff lifeguards throughout the summer, does that mean there will be weeks where there are no lifeguards or will be one lifeguard for no no lifeguards at all for the whole summer?
No, right, correct. We have not had any lifeguards on duty, and we particularly really sat down and tried to look at what we could do with staffing over Fourth of July because we're so busy down at the beach. But there's minimum staffing needs. We really need for lifeguards on any given day to be able to cover stands, breaks, calls for emergency if needed, coverage needed for the water. And we just have not been able to get to that staffing level again, accommodating vacations and with the recruitment pool that we've had this summer.
So we're halting recruitment efforts for lifeguards?
We continue to have lifeguards posted, and if that changes, we could certainly try to get a program up and going. But at this point, we don't have the numbers for staffing the lifeguard stands this summer.
Is are there? I feel like this is a pretty big deal, actually. Are there other recruitment efforts we could try or incentives we can include in that recruitment effort to maybe not give up at this point? I know I've heard from actually quite a few people about this, so I'm glad you brought it up.
I don't. And so the lifeguard recruitment efforts have not stopped. We continue to have it posted. We have worked at the media about posting that we were looking for lifeguards. There's been additional outreach on our social media channels, on our website channels, going through the reaching out to swim team members. We incentivize the lifeguards with and our head lifeguard specifically is tasked with trying to recruit lifeguards. And that that effort actually starts pretty early in the year, January, February of every year. So our outreach efforts aren't starting in May or June or even into July. They're starting early in the year. But this year recruitment challenges, we had a total of five applicants for lifeguards this year, even as we came back through and tried to encourage recruitment, let people know that this was a challenge for us.
So so what does this mean for like rules enforcement at the beach? Is there any body capable of enforcing rules at the beach, or I feel like we're externalizing that responsibility onto parents first, as it should be, their first pride, you know, primarily parents' responsibility. But I I'm seriously, my my wife was a lifeguard in Coeur d'Alene Beach for five years as a teenager, and she saved a couple of lives in that time. And I'm wondering, without lifeguards, we could see some serious you know, injuries or deaths at the beach this summer, because whether we like it or not, parents aren't keeping an eye on their kids all the time. So I does this expose the city any liability? Do we need to think about closing City Beach during certain busy times? I mean, how? It seems like a really big deal to just
Had a number of discussions about liability and how low were our numbers we could go down to? What could we do with a single stand versus multiple stands? Mayor was involved in several meetings on this, and we've never gotten to the point that we canceled the lifeguard program. It was can we staff this? And we have over the last three years. As I think most of our community members know, we've been in chat, we've had staffing challenges over the last several years where we've had to post for days or even weeks at a time that we don't have lifeguards on duty. Unfortunately, with that, with limited staffing that we've had in the last few years, often that came down to the morning of, we had somebody who called in sick. We had somebody who didn't show up for work. So that day we're posting no lifeguard on duty with very little notice to the community or no notice. So in talking about what we were going to do with staffing this summer, again, the challenge was can we staff with a very limited number? Can it be a smaller area of the beach? Can we mark off that area of the beach? And that was with the mayor's support of us looking at scaling the program back. It was never scaled back to we don't have a program, but we have don't have the staffing in order to get the minimum numbers in order to be able to do a program again. If we have people apply for the which is still posted, that could change throughout the summer. But right now we don't have the minimum staffing and our liability really becomes it's our notice of no lifeguard on duty. I think one of the things that has been unclear in terms of expectation, so I'm glad that you bring it up, counselor, is what is the role of of the lifeguard? And and that came up through our discussions, too, the concern that it was too much with limited staffing for their lifeguards to be watching what's happening in the water as well as patrolling dogs that aren't allowed down at the beach, what's happening with parking and a variety of other issues at the beach. And we did clarify with our staff and those that were applying for the positions and had accepted positions that the role of the lifeguard really is is watching over the safety in the water, the patrolling for the other issues at the City Beach, the responsibility is our community resource officers, and we have maintenance staff down throughout the day as well. So we were not asking our lifeguards to be lifeguards plus other patrols down at the beach. It truly was lifeguard duties. And even with that, we still have had the staffing challenges that we have it posted, the position posted, but we have it posted, no lifeguards down at the beach, because right now we don't have the staffing.
And can I just ask, what is the hourly wage that we're offering for lifeguards?
I believe our lifeguards are at fourteen fifty, and we go up to sixteen fifty, I believe, an hour for returning guards, our assistant guards and our head lifeguards.
Okay, I I urge us to consider like maybe looking at that pay in the next year's budget so as to be a little bit more competitive with, you know, the dubs and the server burgers in town, which are paying closer to seventeen dollars an hour from what I hear. So just trying to, you know, bring that kind of teenage level level, I don't know, maybe Trinity as well, bring that wage rate up so that we can attract people to this very important job. A lot of these decisions by kids are really made on the margin, you know, where can I make fifty cents more an hour? So if we're talking about adding a couple thousand dollars to the lifeguard budget to keep it staffed with four or five lifeguards, seems like, you know, when it comes down to saving a life, because those safety issues are going to be borne by the community and either in we had a kid die at the Popsicle Bridge last year because there was no lot. Well, there's never lifeguards on duty there, but that's what can happen. Because they're playing in water with no lifeguards on duty. So something for council to consider. I mean, when we look at the budget, maybe we need to make this more like a what it is, which is a life-saving job in our community, bring bring that pay up.
To include the recruitment effort at Y M C A through the high school, through swim team, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, other civic groups that are looking for that that service aspect of it. I was lifeguard all through, like I grew up next to my municipal pool. This is not the first time that that this body has argued and debated this, and I remember like I will unretire my whistle and come out and be a lifeguard if need be. This is a challenge, and I don't know if it's the money aspect of it. I don't know if it's the recruitment aspect of it, but I would agree with you how critically important it is. And with doing some research with City Beach, that that's a legacy watermark to have lifeguards at our City Beach.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I might, and just to put there, I agree with both of you. But to put things into perspective, we have to realize that we have an indoor pool here right now where we have retirees working forty to fifty hours a week to make sure that they're still indoor swim lessons. They're having the same issues in Coeur d'Alene with their indoor pools and their outdoor outdoor bodies of water as well. Do I think necessarily it's the money? Possibly. Is it possibly the outreach for it as well, too? What I need, we need our community. We need our community to get our children involved with working again. We see this. We have lots of people on the sidelines right now that need to be into the workforce. We can use them desperately right now. The the lessons that they learn from working down on that beach and interacting with those people is absolutely worth gold. So please, our outreach tonight is to all of you out there as well, too. Let bring us your children, bring us those people that you know. There aren't very many retirees left that can do this at this point in time. So thank you.
You, counselor, and just for now, we do benchmark our lifeguard salaries as well. We actually pay more because it is open water than what Y M the local Y M C A is paying. And they've been challenged with getting lifeguards as well. We do partner with them and trying to recruit that lifeguards conservator at City Beach in the summer, move and help with the ride throughout the rest of the year. We've also looked at salaries we're paying as comparable to Silverwood, for example. We're in the range with Silverwood as as well. We I asked ISIS our H R manager to reach out to Silverwood, talk with them about their lifeguard program this year and what they're seeing. They said lifeguard is the hardest position for them to recruit for, and they're having recruitment challenges as well. They had looked at in order to attract employees over to Silverwood, running a bus from Sandpoint over to bring youth in. There wasn't the interest that didn't resolve the issue for them, so they aren't running a bus from Sandpoint. They are from Post Falls. And they offer a number of other perks through their program as well with three free passes for individuals, free passes for family members, special days at Silverwood, and they're having the same recruitment challenges that we are. We did significantly raise the pay for the positions a few years back and actually doubled the cost of our lifeguard program. It was costing us about fifty thousand per year. Three years ago, we've been up through last year at a hundred thousand for the program with the increase in salaries, bringing on the head lifeguard earlier to assist with recruitment efforts. So there has been efforts been made by staff to keep the program going, increasing salaries, outreach throughout the year, partnering with swim programs, and those efforts need to continue. And we need to look at enhancements to that next year as well. This year, I think unfortunately, we're facing the same recruitment challenges that other employers are. What we have seen over at Snack Shack, we've been able to open on time with Snack Shack and operate that throughout the summer, but we're seeing a different dynamic happen there. Wages are significantly lower at Snack Shack than what they are for the lifeguard program. Or about half of what we're paying for the lifeguard program, but we are staffing the concession stand primarily with fourteen-year-olds as opposed to we need a upper age group to be able to be staffing lifeguards. So but we're predominantly fourteen-year-olds at the concession stand this year.
Maybe with, you know, the the salary savings this year by not employing lifeguards, we can look at some sign-on and retention bonuses next year, rolling over some of the payroll that didn't get spent this year into the budget. You know, I mean, I've also seen, I will say, a headline just this week saying that nationwide there's lifeguard shortages, but that means you know, there's got to be more innovation and creativity with recruiting and not just where you post on Facebook, but how you pay as well. I think a lot of it does come down to that, you know, that carrot.
And Justin's point. There's a lot of work out there. There's and it's a it's a great job. It is hard. Like, it's not just getting suntanned. It's a hard job that requires much discipline and much responsibility, all characteristics that I want from a fourteen to eighteen-year-old. And so I echo Justin, like, parents, if you've got them, send them because we need them.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate that discussion. I think we all care deeply about this issue, and hopefully we can get it resolved. Anything else on that? Are you anything else? Okay.
Hopefully we get some more applicants.
Yeah. We'll now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar on any item not not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in council chambers wishes to speak during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you can fill out a comment core. Please fill out a comment card located on the table by the front door. Fill it out and hand it to staff at the back table there. Anyone at the back table will do. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during the public forum, please raise your hand on this time. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to the public forum now. At the beginning of the meeting, if you'd like to speak and do not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the at the end of our regular agenda. I ask for your attention, please, as I recite the rules and procedure for public comment during public forum as well as for other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. Council may not hear or take testimony during public forum on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during a properly noticed public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for the public forum. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or council or to staff and do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front tables as this disrupts the meeting and makes it difficult for them to perform their duties. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if needed. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether or not you reside in Sandpoint City Limits. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor? Kyle Schreiber.
Hello, Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. Today I wanted to return to a dialogue from a couple of months ago during the passage of the great counselor Dick had suggested that we sell off the Baldy Foot property to offset the cost of the new treatment plant. And to that, I just wanted to say thank you for your commitment to fiscal responsibility with taxpayer money. It's vitally important. Personally, I happen to agree with counselors McAllister and Groth, who suggested that perhaps the highest and best use of that property was in public hands. And certainly, it would be more difficult and expensive for the city to acquire a piece of property like that in the future than to keep what we've already got. Either way, I understand why that property must be taken off the sewer district's balance sheet, whether by private sale or purchased through cities' general funds. But what if would would we be willing to gift that property to a developer to build, say, a commercial building? Or, you know, what if they promised to include an element of residential, not low-income housing, but like, you know, luxury condos or something like that? Would that concession warrant us foregoing the recoup of the taxpayer money that was caught in that property? You know, I would say no. But that scenario is basically what the council approved with the M O U authorizing Sura to dispose of the downtown parking lot, which is an even more valuable and irreplaceable piece of property than Baldy Foot. Now, I could make all sorts of comments about the parking garage itself. You know, induce for demand, for example, if we have more free parking, we'll have more traffic downtown or that our her very own parking consultants told us that the only reason that we would need more off-street parking is when the couplet gets built. And so logically, now the couplet is on hiatus, the parking garage should also be on hiatus. But I don't want to come with only complaints. In fact, I want to offer some solutions. You know, I can point to two other locations that would be better suited for a parking garage. Or there are easier and cheaper solutions to add parking to downtown that could be implemented much faster. I've spoken to Counselor Walker about some of that. You know, it's obviously a complex subject that I don't have time to cover. But the bottom line here is that the disposal of that downtown parking lot property is no different than the Baldy Foot property. Because right now it is owned and paid for by the taxpayers of Sandpoint. And so if Sura is bound and determined to give this property to developers, then at the very least, Sura funds should be used to remove that property from the city's balance sheet. So I would ask this council and Sura to put the downtown parking garage project on hold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Madam Clerk?
Chip Albright?
I don't know, it'd be so many people here. You ready? Oh, they're gonna need three minutes. This has to do with the lifeguard thing, actually. So I'm a resident. I live here. I've been in EMS for ten years. By no way, shape, or form, I hear as that. I'm here as like, you know, I work for the county, but I'm here as Chip, as a parent. I live in the community. And I don't think we all realize how important lifeguards really are. I had an incident with my son in May where he was with the soccer team. He went down. I swam out, got him out of the water, and I was holding him in my arms. And man, I've done this before with kids. And man, I've done this before with kids and they die, right? And I'm like, on my watch, how'd this happen? And I didn't take my eyes off him because it was so cold on the way back. And man, I didn't sleep that night. So, you know, the next day, I think, my God, thank goodness, you guys are gonna have lifeguards. And we're there this year swimming, I'm like, where are they? And I'm not blaming anybody for this, but I want you guys to realize they're organized, they're professional. If you're talking to one, their eyes are on the water, they don't even move. And to me, that's important. Emergency happens, it's tower one, two, three, or four, they're telling you, it's organized, you're there. They get everybody out of the water. And these lifeguards are here for grandma's coming, mom's all excited, bring her here, the eyes are off the water for three minutes, kid goes down, guess what? Lifeguards there, that's what they do. It's important, and I don't know any other way how to put it besides that. A life is at stake and they're gonna save a life. What is a life to you, you know? And what is it worth? And how do we make this happen? I thank you all for trying this and doing this, but there's actions, there's ways, there's means. And for all of us, including me, I'm gonna say this, that you're gonna see it on Facebook. You might see it on social media, it might be in the paper, but if a child dies at that beach, it's on all of us as a community, it happened because we didn't make it happen. And that's why I'm here, so at least I've said something instead of my voice. Because it's extremely important that these children have eyes on the water and they have help if something goes down. Because I mean, honestly, answer the question, what is a child's life? A grandpa, whoever, what is it worth to any of you? I mean, they might have a seizure, a medical emergency, and boom, down goes grandpa. They're there to get him out of the water. And if you think about it, man, two minutes, you go unconscious. Three to four, you start to lose brain cells. Six, you're brain dead. And that time is crucial, and these lifeguards are literally gonna save somebody's life. So I'll kind of leave you with that, and I hope we can figure it out as a community. If there's anything I can do to help, I would love, I don't know, if there's any solutions, but can we get some lifeguards as the end goal, guys? So anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Albright, appreciate those comments.
Rebecca Holland?
Good evening, Council Rebecca Holland. I've been a local since age twenty-four and have always been a tree hugger. In nineteen sixty-five, Congress enacted the Land and Water Conservation Grant for the purpose of acquiring and developing recreational land for the people to enjoy. In nineteen eighty-two, Sandpoint accepted such a grant to renovate the city dump site on Pine to become a park named in honor of Frank Travers, who gave freely of his time to develop playfields for children. Numerous young trees were planted in the park in the hope someday they'd provide shade. Now, forty years later, they give much comfort and joy to park visitors of all ages. Yesterday, on the Fourth of July, there were several family groups beneath these trees. Under the big willow, a little boy reached out his arms across its seventy-six inch circumference trunk and expressed the wish to climb the tree. Under the apple, the crabapple tree where another young family played, I recalled seeing two young girls giggling in its branches this spring. I've taken many photos to eventually publish. In fact, all ten of these beautiful mature trees are measured and documented. Many local folks are not pleased when learning these trees are slated to be cut down for a building that could be placed somewhere else without destroying any trees. They share my belief that our community's long-term investment over the years paying the park department to nurture these shade trees is being disrespected by this council. Through a public record request, I read the city's application for over a half million dollars of land-water conservation money. Nowhere did I see the staff informed them of their intention to cut down the trees, the very same trees that this agency helped fund forty years ago. I view this as a dishonest omission, and I expect they will too when they are informed. Truth is, adding a splash pad and some inclusive play equipment onto the existing playground would be the conscientious, sustainably balanced decision for this council to make. Locals here want affordable, family-friendly decisions for their park space, not decisions that cater to wealthy groups who will pay to play and pay to put their names on a building on public land. Let me remind you again, nowhere in your two thousand and twenty park and recreation plan vetted by locals was there a complete rebuild of the playground at Travers Park. It did not exist. My petition numbers continue to grow. So please don't destroy ten healthy trees, which include a tall, strong red oak with a fifty-foot canopy that casts a shadow the width of this chamber. It is not too late for this council to do the right thing and revise the plan that's in another delay. And finally, for the record, in my opinion, the Great Northern Park with its wide-open space of poor-draining train land, not very good for outdoor playfields, but for an under with an underutilized sixty car parking lot is the place for the Russell Building.
Thank you, Ms. Holland, appreciate that.
Architect confirmed, thank you.
Janine Shepherd?
Good evening. Janine Shepherd, Bonner County, just wanted to come and pray for you guys before your meeting. So if you'd like to join me. Dear Lord, first, we thank you for our freedom, Lord, and the freedom we enjoy in this great nation. But we know that our true freedom comes through your Son, Jesus Christ, who forgives our sins and transforms our lives. We do not want to be in bondage to anything but you, Lord. Release us from the grip of the enemy and give us true freedom. We thank you for the opportunity to celebrate Independence Day in such a beautiful place. Your blessings are many, and we praise you for the work of your hands. Please bless the mayor and council members as they care for our city. Make their decisions based on how you would have them move. Help us to be good stewards of the place that we call home. Give them supernatural wisdom and knowledge as they approach difficult issues. Help us all to seek you in everything we do. We ask that you sweep across our city and bring revival to the people here. We know that true satisfaction, peace, and life come from you. Be with everyone here and help us all to seek you diligently. In Jesus's name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
That is all who signed up for public forum, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-three cents, reflecting nine hundred and two thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents for regular payables and eight hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and nineteen cents for payroll. Does counsel have any questions or are there any items counsel wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Very none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved?
It moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule? Yes. Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. First, under old business this evening is a proposed ordinance seeking to add rules of civility and rules of decorum at public meetings to city code. An ordinance was introduced during the city council's May seventeen, two thousand twenty-three meeting, with council requesting some revisions and tabling a decision for the second meeting in June. With the second meeting in June having been counseled, the revised ordinance is now presented this evening for council's consideration. At this time, I would entertain a motion to remove the agenda item from the from the table. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes and this item has been removed from the table for consideration. Now, now you have the Florida City Attorney, Andy Dunham.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. There are two items in the packet that was provided to you for the meeting this evening. The first is a copy of the minutes from the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting. I'm going to address the points which appear on page two, which were the items that we discussed at the time of the meeting. I also have in the packet, a proposed ordinance which shows the changes in the ordinance itself and also comments that were made by council and by staff addressing each of these issues. So I wanted to just focus on on what we have there so you can follow along with the comments. Just as a refresher, I want to point out that the ordinance is intended to address two issues or purposes. The first is rules of civility for public offices, and the second is rules of decorum for public meetings. So there's two, two things we're trying to address. The one thing I do want to point out is the ordinance is not intended to restrict free speech. It's intended to curtail behavior which disrupts either city operations or city meetings. The ordinance itself is patterned to a large degree on a similar ordinance from the city of Norwalk, California, which was addressed by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals several years ago. And the gist of the review was that the court, the court indicated that the statute or the ordinance as presented in the city of Norwalk was intended to dispel disruptive behavior during meetings. The reason being is that the city council and the mayor have business, they have to attend to a county or council meetings, limited in time, limited in scope. And the idea was to try and make sure that that business is attended to by council. This also was addressed somewhat in an Idaho Supreme Court case involving a criminal matter involving the state insurance fund. A person came into the state insurance fund offices with disruptive in the place of business. He was trespassed under the criminal statutes. The Idaho Supreme Court upheld the conviction and noted that, again, it's the disruptive behavior, not the speech which is intended to be addressed as part of, as part of their, in that case, the regulations in the rules of the state insurance fund and the work comp offices. If you look at page two, I'm gonna address these issues, not necessarily in order, so please bear with me. And Jennifer is gonna assist me in going through these, these items. The first thing I want to point out is the statute or the ordinance itself is presented under Title One, Chapter Seven of the Sandpoint City Code under Code of Ethics. After reviewing the ordinance as it currently exists, it was fairly apparent that it was rather outdated and addressed laws which were no longer in place. What was, well, three or four pages of ordinance is summarized on page one of the ordinance itself. Under item B, it says, "All city of Sandpoint elected officials and employees are subject to the regulations and penalties set forth in the State of Idaho's Transparent and Ethical Government Statute Title Seventy-four Idaho Code." So there's a whole body of law that's encompassed in that section, in that particular chapter of the code, addresses many of the issues that are replay or are replacing the code as currently stands. And those cover conflicts of interest, prohibitions against contracts with city officials, city employees, and also issues pertaining to decorum within, within, within the meetings. The second issue that I wanted to address is at the top of page two of your minutes, discussions about, it says, proposed orders are posed under section A three F, rules of civility, clarify how and under what circumstances calls visits would be considered redundant. If you go to page four of the proposed ordinance, under section A one F at the bottom.
A three F.
That's, you're right, I can't count, so A three F. Under A three F, we discussed, there was a question posed by a member of public about, well, what if I come in and ask the same question about a particular matter on a, on a regular basis? Is that violating the stat, the ordinance? The answer is no. Again, this is not regulating free speech, it's regulating disruptive behavior. And if you look at the preface to this section, section three, it says, "Members of the public will refrain from behavior that disrupts or threatens to disrupt city operations, including..." And F now reads, "Repetitive calls, visits, or correspondence to city offices or staff with an associated pattern of disruptive behavior, including verbal or physical aggression and/or threats regarding an issue of which city officials or staff have already provided pertinent information or instruction." So the thing we wanted to make sure that we clarified was that it's not the questions, it's the behavior. So we wanted to make sure, you know, we addressed that in the, in the ordinance. The second item is under the second bullet point about regarding track warnings. Would you please turn to page seven of the ordinance, please? Under section C, again, this is a new, you had it there, just go a little bit, Jennifer. Thank you. This section talks about notice trespass, says, "Any person who violates provisions of the rules of civility or violates rules of decorum during a public meeting may be trespassed from the city and/or from city meetings." Second sentence says, "In all such cases, such persons shall receive a written notice signed by the mayor or council president identifying the conduct giving rise to the trespass and further providing that such person may enter city property for emergency purposes only or to access emergency personnel, or may contact city employees by USML or by other means." So we wanted to make sure we had a clarification as to what someone's gonna receive, not gonna be trespassed from the billing, and that's it. You'll receive a notice regarding the actual issue that caused the trespass. Could you go back to page six? We had a question about, can we provide some flexibility with respect to time allotted to folks for making public comments? Because it's sometime, in some instances, it makes sense to continue that time for, for more time than the three minutes. Obviously, we have a limited amount of time and resources at council meetings. It may not necessarily necessarily be true at some other meeting. So in that section, the blue comment says, "A presiding officer may, at his or her discretion, limit or extend the time for public comment at the meeting as time permits. Any extension or limit shall be applied equally and fairly to all members of the public." We wanted to provide that flexibility in those types of instances. Would you turn to page eight, please, over there, sorry? We had a comment about the right to appeal. And I want to point out to the council that we bifurcated this for the reason that being trespassed from city property facilities or being trespassed from a public meaning, meeting have two different sets of responsibilities and authorities. Being trespassed from city property falls within the ambit of the administrative off, office of the mayor as a chief administrative officer, and it's an administrative function. If, if an employee feels threatened by someone, then that appeal should go to the mayor or the city council president to make a determination on the appeal. And the reason is obvious. One, we want to make sure that we protect our employees. And two, we want to make sure that we are looking at, you know, the issues of, you know, protecting employees and the liability for providing that protection. So that appeal is gonna go to the mayor or to the city council president. The second part of that, under B, says trespass from meetings will go to the city council. That happens in a city council meeting primarily, and it's more of a legislative function. So the appeal is gonna come to the council for making a determination on whether or not the claim or the trespass was meritorious. We also added a statement that says, the statement not, does not necessarily need to be in writing. We can assist someone with putting together a statement. We need to have a writing, but we don't need to have somebody sit down and write out a statement. If they want to come in and paraphrase it, we could assist them with putting something together to that degree. We still need a writing because we need to have a public record of whatever that appeal is. The last portion of this section has to do with a question that was raised about whether or not someone could attend meetings and spec, and specifically the appeals by Zoom, and that's under section C, we say the right to appeal. I'm sorry, under three, access to meetings. I'm sorry, under three, access to meetings. Any person trespass from city property or from attendance at city meetings shall have the right to attend such meetings by electronic means offered by the city, but by the same rules apply. The la, we, we don't need to, you don't need to check, check this one, Jennifer. The last question we had was we deleted the language about being someone addressing the council from the podium. Obviously, we may not have a podium in all of our meetings. So we took that section out. And then also we provided on page five under section B one C at the end says, the presiding officer, i.e. mayor, shall also identify at the beginning of the meeting, the sergeant-at-arms or law enforcement officer responsible for enforcing the rules of decorum during the meeting. So I think we have encapsulated all of the comments that were made at the meeting. The remainder of this, the ordinance is the same as what we presented to you with those changes. The most substantive changes were in the appeal process because we wanted to bifurcate that administrative roles of the mayor versus legislative roles of council. I don't have anything else. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thanks. That's great, Andy. Any questions from council?
Just a comment. Thank you. Thank you to all the staff for doing it, not only just for the revision, but for the time that got put into this. It shows forth here. I think there's some fair compromise for civility, freedom of speech, freedom of expression. While we're all able to be heard and businesses unimpeded. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work. Thanks. All right. Are there any members of the public, Madam Clerk, who'd like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One moment. Rebecca Holland.
And for the record, Rebecca Holland is my name, longtime resident in Bonner County and previous Sandpoint business owner, owner, now retired. On April nineteenth, I addressed council regard in Travers Park Playground without using any abusive language or any disruptive behavior. As proven by city video minutes. As I was leaving chamber, I was flipped off by a state staff member who did not like what I said about the project. A bit shocked by this action, I stopped in the hall and considered if and how to report it. But knowing that it would be disruptive to do so, I left and simply wrote it off to immaturity on this person's part. I'd previously heard about rude emails from this person to some other residents and figured her, her discipline would eventually come as she escalated in making similar poor decisions. The next day, to my surprise, however, it wasn't over. I was called by this police to investigate the incident. So I told the officer what I just told you. Two days later, I was called by Chief Kuhn and told if I attended any more city public gatherings in the next three months, I would be asked to leave. And if I didn't, I'd be arrested for criminal trespassing. Knowing that this was unfair to be found guilty without a hearing, I requested and was told I could come before council and executive session or take a meeting with the mayor. I chose the meeting with the mayor, but several days passed before I spoke again with Chief Kuhn, who said you didn't want to consider this, you wanted to consider this incident a learning experience. I wasn't sure for who. Then learning that the staff person claimed I had clas, clapped my hands in a taunting way toward her. So somehow I was left to believe that the alleged offense canceled out. However, later, remembering when I left, there were five or six police officers standing across the back in attendance to support the pay raise. I informed the chief of this later and it hardly the time for me to be confrontational with so many police looking on. Besides, I was carrying my computer and a, and a notebook in two hands, so no hand clapping could have occurred. But there it is, a test run for this decorum ordinance, which blocked me from attending a workshop of that workshop that I cared, cared about. I missed the skateboard park meeting, even though I have longer history with its develop, development than any of you on the diocese. These proposed new rules are an effort to control anyone who attempts to speak in opposition of staff. In my case, through a public record request, I proved that the city administrator manipulated straight facts about site testing at Travers Park. While I would have preferred to share this information quietly, directly with the mayor, he, he did not answer my request to meet.
Mr. Mayor, that is three minutes.
Madam Clerk, sorry, Ms. Holland, your time is up. Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak on this matter, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho amending Sandpoint City Code Title One, Chapter Seven, Code of Ethics, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication and an effective date. I'd entertain a motion that the ordinance passes first reading by title only and that the summary is approved. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passed that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended and that the ordinance passed its second and third reading under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
I think with this being an issue of freedom of speech, I think it might be prudent to just allow the public to have this heard. So I'm going to say no on the readings.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
The motion passed and this ordinance number fourteen oh six is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. The final item on the agenda this evening is a proposed development agreement regarding construction of the extension of Samuelson Avenue. Now you have the floor to city planner, Amy Tweeden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This development agreement is a next step on extension of the agreement that council entered into a year ago. And the purpose is to assign the roadway extension responsibility that is detailed in two different agreements between the county and the city to Little Sand Creek LLC, the owner and developer of the adjacent property I shown on the map to the left of what would be the extended right of way. The original right-of-way agreement was approved in two thousand and eight and again extended last year, which extended the roadway completion to no later than twenty twenty-seven. And the agreement specifies responsibility of Little Sand Creek LLC to construct the roadway to city standards as well as other conditions that were included in the original agreement. The agreement has been reviewed by engineering, legal counsel and the developer. The conditions of the agreement are that the new roadway be built at a seventy-foot right-of-way. And again, that would be to city standards. As it will be a dead-end street, this ends actually at the city corporate limit. A fire turnaround will be required. And there is a condition of the agreement that no building permits will be issued for the subject property until the road is substantially complete and a final plat is approved. And then there are several conditions that were part of the original agreement that are just put into this as well. One is possible utility stubs and drive approaches for the county property. Fence along the eastern edge. The county retains proceeds from the sale of any trees that are removed in this right-of-way. And then any structures or existing lighting need to be moved by the developer as directed by the county. So those are the conditions that are included into the agreement. Again, these are all just brought over from the original two thousand and eight agreement. And the request would be approval of the proposed resolution that authorizes the mayor to sign the right-of-way development agreement.
Okay. Does council have any questions? All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very none. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the resolution for the development agreement with Little Sand Creek LLC for the construction of Samuelson Avenue. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.